Call this meeting to order. Uh, Mr. Justice Malden, could you lead us in prayers?
Shout a prayer. Our Almighty, High and Holy Heavenly Father, we joyously bow our heads as we approach Your own grace this evening. Father, we thank You for giving us opportunity to live in this country, Father, for taking these freedoms, Father. Thank You for blessing us with everything that we have to take part in this life, Father. We understand that all things, the good and bad, come from You, Father. We thank You for allowing us to be representatives of the people here in this county, Father. We pray that we conduct ourselves in a manner that is appropriate, Father. We pray that we seek to do Your will and also, Father, bring glory to You. Father, pray that You be with us through this meeting, Father. God bless you, take it to heart the things that set before us, Father, and to do everything in its best manner that we can. Lord, we thank You for Jesus. We thank You for Your sting of redemption and for sending Him here to witness this to go across on our behalf. We ask for His name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May it be seen. Ms. Stacy, would you do us a roll call?
Lydia Gregory.
Here.
Helen Vose. Terry Givens. Billy Bass. Greta Kirby. Charles Kent. Ron Pascal. Lynn Brown. Scotty Barrett. Matt Inyard. Erica Abel. Cordell Smith. Danny Erizari. Stephen Lish. Eddie Stout. Casey Elrod. Justin Malden. Barry Cahoon. Tommy Vane. Junior Fields. Connor McDonald. Tim Beller. Danny Huff. Ed De La Rosa. Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. All right, twenty-four present, okay. Uh, item number five. Stacy, do we have anyone signed up for public comment at this time?
No.
No public comment, all right. We will move to item number six. It is the presentation of the Resolution Zero, Twenty Twenty Four Oh One, the settlement agreement with the Smith County Board of Education. At this time, I will turn it over to our attorney for this case, Mr. Daniel Rader, to present this resolution to you.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you. Is Mike out there if you want to grab that game? Or Matt's got one?
Goodness gracious. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here in person tonight. So, um, this is, uh, I think we've got a good result that we want to present to you tonight. Your Attorney, Mr. Hassler, Matt, as you guys know, have worked hard. We've been extremely aggressive fighting back against this lawsuit that was filed against the county commission. Um, and we have met with some folks from the Board of Education, the Director of Schools and their lawyers, and we have a proposed settlement for you tonight. It's my understanding that the Board of Education voted on it earlier tonight. Part of our arrangement was they would have to go first so we wouldn't have an issue with moving goalposts or anything like that. So, Board of Education has voted on it, now we can present it to you. We will ask you guys to go into executive session in a few minutes so that if you have any questions, you can ask those in the attorney-client context and, and even about whether or not certain terms are satisfactory or otherwise. But just to present it to you, Mr. Hassler's prepared a resolution that goes through the terms of the proposed settlement and it matches the written tentative settlement agreement that we have prepared subject to your approval. And the agreement provides, first of all, first and foremost, that the county will operate under the Nineteen Eighty-One Financial Management Act. That's exactly what you guys passed. The Board of Education has agreed that you all passed that, that it was proper, and that we will go forward under those terms. Uh, and so that is, that is the most important thing. No need to revoke, no need to address it further. The lawsuit will be dismissed and we'll all go forward under the Nineteen Eighty-One Act with all the benefits, the transparency, the accountability that that provides for your citizens here in Smith County. Um, the agreement also confirms several other things that I know that I've said publicly, I know that many of you all have said publicly. Nobody's going to lose their job over the Nineteen Eighty-One Act being adopted. Purchases are going to be made timely for, for everyone, including the students. There's not going to be any risk to anybody about it, which is something that I think you all know. Um, the provision provides that we will, uh, ensure that the Board of Education has representation on the finance committee, something that the statute already requires insofar as the Director of Schools is on the committee. It's my understanding that Commissioner Kirby has agreed to relinquish first seat on the committee to allow one more person from the Board of Education to serve on that so that everybody's got a seat at the table, and that's part of the settlement agreement, um, which is part of what this commission tried to do when you passed that resolution back in August to invite them to come, uh, and meet with you and talk with you. That unfortunately never happened until we had to deal with the lawsuit instead. But the resolution contains all the terms. Um, you all have that in front of you. We can go into executive session to, to answer any questions that you have about them or the lawsuit generally. Again, remember, uh, two things. Number one, this is a special call meeting, so we can't discuss anything that's not on the agenda tonight. This proposed settlement's on the agenda. Number two, we can't deliberate in an executive session at all. Um, we have to do the deliberation in public. Executive session is for me to share information with you and you to, you to ask questions to me and Mr. Hassler will have that communication. But as far as deliberation, should we do this, should we do that? All that needs to happen in a public meeting. So with that said, I would request a motion to move into executive session.
Motion to move into executive session, say it again.
Motion by, Matt Inyard, seconded by Justin Malden. Any questions, discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, we would ask that everybody that is not a member of the county commission...
At this time, Resolution Number 01202401 is on the table. At this time, I would take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve is second over here, motion by Junior, second by Junior Fields. I have a motion and a second. At this time, is there any questions or discussions on the motion?
Do we need to amend it?
There were a couple of graphical errors that we probably need to think of.
I'd like a motion to amend, to accept the motion with the amendment of number one. Add Board of Education to the Senate. At the end of Finance, add Management Committee. Number five, at the very end where it says established by the Finance Management Committee, add management as that word. Fourteen, add Finance Management Committee. Number sixteen, change the date from January the sixteenth to the twenty-third, which reflects tonight's meeting.
Any other additions or corrections? All right, you have a motion to approve as amended, and it's also seconded. I will take any questions or discussions. Commissioner Malo.
All right, I'm going to get this out of the way. All right, guys, so here's the deal on this. The ultimate end goal for what we wanted to accomplish was the Financial Management Act of nineteen eighty-one. And this settlement agreement allows us to continue under the Financial Management Act of nineteen eighty-one. We will be under a centralized system of purchasing and accounting and bookkeeping and purchasing. It will still be under that centralized department. Remember, we're already partially centralized. The County General, the Road Department, under the Fifty-Seven Act are already in there, so we're moving the schools in. Ultimately, for us and the current Finance Department, those employees who are in there, that's not a big change. That's not a big shift for them. But what this is going to allow us to do, what do our constituents, what do our citizens want? They want transparency. They want accountability. They want efficiency. And this is going to allow us to do that. We are the financial stewards of this county. We have an obligation and we have a duty to know how every penny in this county is being spent. We have an obligation to know how it's being utilized. By passing this and continuing with this, we're one step closer to that. If we do not adopt this settlement and we continue down the path of this litigation, I believe we'll be successful. Don't get me wrong. I think that we will be successful in that. But how much time and money is that going to take? How long will it actually be till the eighty-one act is enforced and we're actually going down the path of adopting it? How much money is it going to take? Because we're going to do a budget amendment here a little bit later already for what we've incurred just on our side. That's one side, and we're looking at a thirty thousand dollar budget amendment. That doesn't include what the Board of Education's costs are. So if we don't adopt this, we're going to have more time unnecessarily, and we're going to have more costs added to this. When we go through this list, understand the majority of these things that are in here, it's already how we operate. They're not asking for changes. Line item amendments, that's already what we do in the county. When it looks at bidding, the department heads already do their own bids. They seek those out. Do we, think about it, when was the last time we approved a bid at the commission? We don't. As long as they were in their budget, we have given them the authority to be able to approve their own bids. That's not any different than what's being asked here. The administration of grants is going to be the same. Asking for purchase orders to be done in the time limit is fine. They're asking for one day. The Finance Department already does it within a few hours. All right, those are things that are already happening. When you go through this list, this isn't them asking for us really to do anything that's really any different. Number nine, they want to be able to see the books. Okay, that's pretty simple. They should be able to see their books, right? They can't change it, they can't affect it, but they need to see where their budget is and what's happening. And without that would be accomplished because they'll probably have somebody within the V O E who's going to be their person providing. Payroll dates aren't going to change, guys. A reason that doesn't need to change is because they can stay on the same payroll cycle, right? Why would we affect that? They've got some people who are salaries, some people who are hourly things. All right, I think that's a non-issue. Obviously, this is going to have to be by amendment. By doing this, by accepting this, we're going to drop all secrets. Number fourteen, they did ask that any dispute would be put forth on the Financial Management Committee is the first item. I'll tell you, it's a great idea for everybody in the county. Right, if there's any department head within the county that has an issue, I think they should be able to come before the Financial Management Committee and express their concern, not just the Board of Education. Remember, by adopting this, we're all going to be under a uniform set of rules. This isn't going to be different rules for different areas. The Road Department, the Board of Education, and the County General are all going to operate under a unified set of rules. That means all purchasing is going to be done the same, no matter what department you are in the county, right? When we're doing the bookkeeping, it's all going to be done the same. There's going to be a lot more uniformity in those rules, but also, what do we get anytime we ask for it? If you call our Finance Department, you need information, what do you get? You get that information, right? You have that transparency. Now we will have that transparency with every area within the county. We're going to be able to know exactly what is happening. And we can ensure through the procedures that are going to be set forth by the Financial Management Committee that things are being done the way that they should be done. There won't have to be any concerns that a specific department's getting away with something or being able to do something that somebody else isn't doing. Everybody's going to be treated the same. Everybody's going to be held accountable, no matter what area of the county government that you're in. Again, overall, we have a duty to be the responsible financial stewards to our constituents. We're responsible to tell them what's happening. We're responsible to know what's happening. Can't tell them what's happening without knowing it. And this is going to allow us to do that. This is just good government. This is good, effective government. And so I think that we need to support this. And I would ask that each and every one of you support this, so if we can get this ball rolling and that we can go ahead and begin these policies and get the Financial Management Committee going, and so that we can see the benefits that they can add.
All right, Junior, hand the microphone.
I'll be short this time. Everybody has to live with that. I think all of you are seeing a little glimpse into what, as an attorney, the difficult conversations we have to have with clients sometimes. Where we know what we did was right, we know our client was in the right, and yet still sometimes the best advice is to settle because of whatever reason. In this case, the time and the money that it would take for us to just get a judge to say that we were right. And at the end of the day, if the judge says we were right, we took this case all the way through trial, we would begin operating under the nineteen eighty-one act, which is what this settlement allows us to begin doing immediately. I spoke to the clerk. If we were to reject this settlement and move on to a trial, we're looking at a trial date at the earliest in February of twenty twenty-five. So I'm not able to move forward with the nineteen eighty-one act, not able to move forward with centralized nineteen eighty-two for over a year. And if that date doesn't look out, the next date is June twenty twenty-five. So that's eighteen months away. So that's what we're looking at if we want to retract this lawsuit now and try to, just for the, to have the ego to say we want the judge to tell us we were right and essentially we can get everything we wanted and go ahead and start operating tomorrow under this act. And we're, like Justin said, we're about to appropriate thirty thousand dollars to cover our attorney fees, and they've got two attorneys on their side who are working on this case. So if we do the numbers, we're quickly approaching a hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer funds that have already been wasted on this lawsuit. And that's unacceptable to me, and for no other reason, that's another reason for me. Despite, we started out this process for financial transparency and financial efficiency. And I think to hold true to those values, we agree to this settlement and move on and start governing like our constituents want us to. So I think we should approve it and move forward with it.
Any more asks? No other questions or discussions before we vote?
I haven't heard anyone say that we didn't do anything wrong.
Well, I'll say it. You didn't do anything wrong.
I think it's very clear that there is no admission of guilt and that we did absolutely nothing wrong.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, they, yeah, the school board came to us with the settlement, and we did not go to anything. So just want to make that clear. All right. Any other questions or discussions before we go on? All right, seeing none, we do a roll call, let's take it. You are voting yes to take the settlement, no to reject the settlement.
Lydia Gregory?
Yes.
Helen Bowes?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Ron Pascal?
Yes.
Lynn Brown?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Erica Abel?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Irisari?
Yes.
Stephen Lesh?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Barry Cahoon?
Yes.
Tommy Bain?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Tim Beller?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Thank you all. All right, that is done and settled. I'll ask this question. How quick will all these suits be dismissed and this truly done?
We should hopefully be able to get orders prepared this week, and if the chance was around, we'll get them signed this week. It'll be the first next week. Also, may I have the joint statement that we agreed?
That is true.
So we want to release that this time.
We will, yes, we do have a joint session. We will get that out. Jeremy's going to send that out. You want me to read it again? That's right, we'll read it on record. That's right. All right, this is a joint media statement of the Smith County Board of Education and the Smith County Board of Commissioners. The Smith County Board of Education and the Smith County Board of Commissioners, along with the Director of Schools and the County Mayor, have sought and reached this resolution of the differences that arisen as a result of the County Commission's adoption of the Financial Management Act of nineteen eighty-one, which would centralize administration of county funds. The parties have agreed that the county will operate under the nineteen eighty-one act. The dispute resolution process led to a collaborative effort to refine the process of implementing the eighty-one act. The Board of Education will continue to administer the education programs of Smith County in an efficient, autonomous, and effective manner, while the county will reap the intended physically efficient benefits of centralized purchasing, budget administration, and transparency. Throughout this process, it has been the Board of Education's goal to be in a position to continue to provide outstanding educational opportunities to Smith County students. Likewise, the County Commissioners sought to find a solution that allows county services to be delivered in a manner that creates the least burden on the taxpayer. The resolution of these issues provides a mechanism for both public bodies to have a seat at the table for implementation of policies and procedures and to move forward. We will get all of that out to you in an email for that. That concludes that. All right. Number nine is the approval of the Central Finance Committee. As you know, part of that settlement was Ms. Greta Kirby has agreed to step off the committee, and I believe they elected their school board member, Mr. Scotty Lewis, so I need a motion to approve the adding of Scotty Lewis to the board.
Motion to appoint Scotty Lewis to Financial Management Committee.
Okay, second. Second, lead in. I have a motion and second to add Scotty Lewis, and that is effectively removing Ms. Greta Kirby off the act. All right, at this time, is there any questions or discussions?
I would like to thank Commissioner Greta Kirby for your service. If you're willing to sit down on this, that's what it'd be great.
Yes, very much so. We appreciate it, Ms. Greta. All right, any other questions or discussions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, out of number nine, passes. All right, out of number ten, is it a budget amendment resolution for the attorney fees? That is to cover the fees. Since Jeremy agreed, he didn't want to work the register without getting paid, we're going to do a budget amendment to pay that.
Motion to approve budget amendment, second.
Motion to second. All right, I have a motion and second to budget amendment for that. Any questions or discussions on that, Mr. Mr. Malo?
I want to thank Mr. Redder for what you did for us and coming on and taking this case on and vigorously defending us every step of the way. And you did an outstanding job, and I do appreciate it very, very much. Even when you were on vacation and out of vacation, you did not stop working for us. And so I do, I do appreciate that. I do want to ask the question, this thirty thousand dollars, is it for just his?
Yes.
I'm going to say this to the commission, and I think it's something that we need to consider. Mr. Hasler has not asked for any additional compensation during this process. He is on a retainer salary. He does not bill us hourly for his services. Given the situation, given the amount of work that he has put in through this, I don't know what you calculate at any time or anything, Mr. Hasler, but at some point, we need to address and look at giving him some additional compensation for this because he deserves it. Because he's done the work. None of us work for free. He doesn't need to be working for free either.
Any other questions or discussion? And I will echo you. Thank you, Mr. Redder, for what you've done for us. I definitely highly agree.
Hope you don't test.
Exactly. And I agree, Jeremy's done a tremendous job in this as well. All right, any other questions, Mr. Mr. Inyard?
Is this to date what you, what you bill, or what we owe you, or is this just for December?
It's more than what I billed it, so.
Well, yeah, we got the other partner.
We're trying to, I just want to make sure we're not going to be back here next.
No, this will cover it all. This is, this will more than cover.
Can, I'm just going to go ahead and throw this out there because I think we need to go ahead and do something for Jeremy too. I'm going to offer an amendment if we need to come back and do more. Can we, I would like to offer an amendment to this to change it to
Can we, I would like to offer an amendment to this to change it to forty thousand dollars.
Second.
A motion and a second to amend this to forty thousand dollars? Any questions or discussions on that?
Well, we have a, when will we have an itemized breakdown of what Mr. Rader charged? He said would be over the amount, so I'm just trying to figure out.
I can send you, I can send you all his, what he sent me, and we have a page in. I'll send you that, and then his last bill, I'll send it to you.
So, is there some of the invoice at the end of December?
For December, yeah.
And I'll send another invoice at the end of January, but most of the work was in December. And of course, though, it's...
So is the amendment, the amendment to pay Attorney Hasler the difference?
Is that what's your...
Correct, yes. I would like to pay Attorney Hasler. Because I can tell you, whatever, I mean, if it's ten thousand dollars, if it's one thousand dollars, that's probably still not enough for what he's done. I mean, if he, if he was to bill us by the hour for this in addition to what he normally does as the attorney, I guarantee we would exceed that.
Mr. Dan?
So, Mr. Rader already said that the thirty thousand dollars is probably a little bit more than what, you know, the actual invoice.
Right.
That being said, was there an amount that is already going to be allocated? Because it does, it does say on the handout that it's to cover attorney fees.
Yeah, that thirty thousand is what we were going to set it, it's what. Because I didn't know what his January bill was going to be. I knew the, I knew the December bill, so I added to that when we decided to do the budget amendment to cover January. He's saying anything less than that, so yes, there was plenty there to cover for that.
And if there was going to be any remaining amount left over, how many, a thousand, it was going to, was that already going to Attorney Hasler?
No, that was, we'll go back to one thousand. That would have just went back into our regular funds. All right, any other questions, Ms. Lydia?
Does the ten thousand specifically have to be for Mr. Hasler, or could it be whatever's left over?
I think that's, is that the motion, that's your immediate motion?
The intent is to raise it to forty thousand dollars, and whatever Jeremy already gives, he already has his line item. Whatever the forty thousand dollars minus whatever Mr. Rader's expenses are, I would like to see go to Mr. Hasler for, for his work in this. And I know that, I know that is more money. I'm not the guy who likes to spend money, but he has, Mr. Rader's went above and beyond. There is no telling, and I probably am responsible for half of what I'm offering to, to give Jeremy for calling him throughout this process. But the amount of time that he has spent not only working with Mr. Rader, but just talking to us, there's no telling. If he, if he was to bill by the hour for the actual work that he has done, because he didn't sign up for us to be in a lawsuit this year. That's not part of what his regular duties are. And we are fortunate that we have an attorney who has a set retainer and does not bill us by the hour. I don't know of any other body who has an attorney that doesn't bill by the hour, or have a retainer with seven hundred hours and then bill beyond that. So I think we're still getting a market at that amount.
Can I get paid for the times you called me?
I think you should have to pay me for those times. That's a privilege.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the offer. I, for those of you who don't know what Mr. Malden is saying, I, I made a choice a couple years ago to not do hourly. When I first came on, and this conversation between myself and the mayor, and I, and some of you can fast, but since it's here, here we are. I made a choice not to do hourly. I computed the time I spent the year prior, and basic calculations, and offered a retainer amount that you all have graciously increased over the, over the years, over time at times. So it is not my practice that I bill hourly, however, and I appreciate the offer and, and I'm, you know, but if you want an itemized statement of what I've done on this, I can attempt to put that together if you prefer that. I don't want to, I don't want any impression that I'm getting a windfall of anything in this. So whatever your will is, I did not expect Commissioner Malden to bring that up tonight, so I'm kind of unprepared for that.
Ms. Lydia?
Can we make sure that it's not the taxes bonus?
If you're kidding, I can...
You can, yeah. Any other questions or discussions? Yes, sir?
I just want to echo what Commissioner Malden's already said. I've talked to Attorney Hasler more times than my wife on some days on my way home. So I do appreciate yourself and Mr. Rader, thank you for your time for this and your guidance on this matter, and I think both were well-deserved in it.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call, a second. Good work, man.
Unless the original, unless the original one do, you know, wants to amend their motion, take it from the other side. Who did the original, uh, motion?
Mayor.
I'll make the, I'll amend the motion as described by Commissioner Malden to have ten thousand dollars left over go to, after Mr. Rader is done, the rest of it goes to Attorney Hasler.
Okay.
Who would say it in that original?
No, it's basically...
Say it again. Say it again, and then we have a motion. And a second to amend the resolution to forty thousand dollars, whatever's left over after Mr. Rader's bill is paid, will go to Attorney Hasler. Any other questions or discussions? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call, a second.
Lydia Gregory?
Yes.
Helen Bowes?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Oh.
Ron Pascal?
Yes.
Leon Brown?
Yes.
Scotty Barrett?
Yes.
Matt Enyard?
Yes.
Erica Abel?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Irisari?
Yes.
Stephen Lish?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
No.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Casey Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Barry Cahoon?
Yes.
Tommy Bain?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Tim Beller?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
Twenty-three and one, pass. All right, thank you, thank you for the resolution. Out of number eleven is the approval of the Twenty Twenty-four, Twenty-five Budget Committee. Okay, I was wrong. All right, motion to approve, second. Motion to approve, that's the thing. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all... Yeah, I was, I don't even cut down.
I already read.
Well, the reason is, is we're kind of in that, in between, we're still Fifty-Seven, we're going to Eighty-One. We'll never be Eighty-One by the end of budget year. Our goal, I think what we talked about the other day, is to be fully implemented by October after budget, after this year closes out. So with that, we want to stay with what the Fifty-Seven Act is, and then that's a five-person with that, so that's why we use what we do.
The question was posed to me as to how we set the budget. The Eighty-One Act, your Financial Management Committee is your budget committee, unless the County Commission establishes by resolution a separate budget committee. That may be your intent, it may not be, we'll deal with that. However, I, I reached out and tried to do some research on this. My, different counties see it different ways. As I read the statute, I believe that until you're fully implemented, all of your other items, budgetary finance still applies. So my, my belief is that you are still, as far as budget concerns, that budgeting, you are still under the Fifty-Seven Act until this is fully implemented. Under Fifty-Seven Act, you have the statutory budget committee of the mayor and four other individuals who can be whoever you appoint. And so that's why in this budget season, I recommend for the mayor to carry forward as if you're still operating under Fifty-Seven, because until you're fully implemented, you sort of are.
And I think that's the way to go. Even under Eighty-One, if we were implemented, we've got policies and procedures and all kinds of stuff with the Financial Management Committee, and it doesn't, it doesn't make sense for the Financial Management Committee in my eyes to be the budget committee, because Mickey's got his own stuff to worry about, we've got the Director of Schools and the Board of Education members that need to worry about their budgets. They're, they're not going to be concerned with the rest of the county, but anyway. I think we need to do this even once we're fully implemented, this is what we need to be doing.
Yeah, that still needs to be your job. Yes, sir.
For the online audience, can you read off the budget committee members, please?
As stated, Mayor Jeff Mason, because that's where I'm on there, and, and the chairman, Chairman Pro Jim Matthew Enyard, steering A Chairman Connor McDonald, steering B Chairman Tim Beller, and Commissioner Greta Kirby. Any other questions or discussions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries. Out of number twelve is the motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Matt, junior seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned. My financial names, but we have to meet, right here.